Hi, everybody. See, we all here, one, two, three, four, five. Anybody here from Councilor Prestizo? He's usually a little bit behind at the 5:30 meetings. So why don't we just go ahead and get started and I presume he'll be here. I'll send him a text just to make sure. Okay, so with that then, let's go ahead and call the City Council Study Session of March 1st to order at 5:33. Roll call, please.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Penomar.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Bayers.
Here.
Councilor Harry Miller.
Here.
Mayor Ayersflop.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Lucero, okay. Jordan, I just want to let you know that I don't have a copy of the agenda in.
It should be, if I'm sharing the right screen, you should see it in front of you. Do you all see an agenda in front of you? Be great.
So the next item on the agenda is goal setting session to review progress, identifying the single areas and prioritize activities for the coming fiscal year. Staff?
All right, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, and thank you for joining us on Zoom tonight. I have to admit, I made this call while there was six inches of snow on the ground yesterday and still snowing. So I expected an ice cube today, so we went ahead and renoticed this meeting. So appreciate the flexibility for you all and the audience members, too. Starting, is going to start our conversation around what our priorities want to be for this upcoming fiscal year. So last year, we did a really extensive goal-setting session, where the City Council identified six main goal areas, outlined exact goals within those goal areas, and we came up with projects to do to help us achieve those goals we wanted to achieve. It was incredibly substantial, a lot of the projects spanned anywhere from one year to five years to complete. And so this is just an annual refresh for us to look at what we've accomplished so far, see if there's any missing areas, and then to identify what we want to prioritize over the next 12 months. So this is our conversation today. And so I'm going to just re-ground you guys and reconnect you guys on what those goal areas are to start the conversation. Really hoping this can be an informal session just to start getting the brain flowing on this. So if you're eating dinner, feel free to go cameras off. If you have something to share, feel free to shout it out. I admittedly designed this session to be in person, and so it's going to be a little more clunky switching to Zoom, Zoom life. So what you see on the screen before you are the six goal areas that the Council and the Commissions and Commissions Community identified as our main focuses. Right now, they are affordable housing, so families and households of all incomes live and thrive, community safety, residents and voters feel safe both now and in the future, sustainability, transportation, community engagement, and economic development. And I have a point, note-taking tool here, sort of a beautiful circle, now we have a nice linear rainbow of those school areas.
Hey, Jordan, you're breaking up a little bit. It's with a nod of the head, is anybody else hearing that breakup?
Yeah, okay, I'll fix that right now. All right, can you guys hear me a little more clearly now? Yep.
Yes.
Okay, superb. I'm pulling a little playbill out of the Commissioner Volcard's book where I have audio on one phone and then I'll do visual on my computer with you all. Okay, well, these are the six goal areas that was named at last year's goal-setting session. So I'm putting your faces on the big screen. Do these goals still ring true for you all? I'm seeing, I'm seeing the slightest of head nods. And so my worries are not, I got a big head nod from Councilor Clark, thank you, Councilor Bayers, go for it.
Can you please just blow up the font a little bit on these guys?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Apologies, I accidentally unmuted the sound. All right, so I'm just going to zoom in. So affordable housing, and the statements below are kind of the achievement statements that we want to see as talent's reality. Economic development. Oopsie. Oh, guys. Sustainability, transportation, safety, and engagement. Perfect, ringing true for Councilor Bayers. And I, and I, my first check-in is on these big goal areas. You know, the first question is, are we missing anything? Do we, now that we're a year into these goals, have we realized that we're missing anything that we want to focus on as a community? And that's something that I'd love for you guys to chew on over the next few weeks. I do have one myself, I like to propose to Council. And that one would be, and I haven't thought of a catchy name yet, but improving bureaucracy, really focusing on the foundation. And what I mean by that is, you know, getting our city policies up to date, getting all of our processes documented, getting that, those in-house things needed to help us better support achieving these goals. So I'm going to selfishly put in that, just a little proposal on that. And I'm putting on the bottom as the foundation to the goals. And we can, we can work on a catchy title later.
Well, I think if you can pull that off, you get a special award. It's sort of the holy grail of bureaucracy.
Jordan, would that include like, you know, some additional training for new committee and commission and, and really just wraparound, you know, wraparound improvements for, for all aspects of our government, is, is that part of that? Because if not, that's, I would like to see where that would fit.
Yeah, you know, I would propose, I would propose that that one fits a little better under community engagement because our committees are such the tool for us to engage directly, more directly with community members. But let's dive, we'll dive, let's dive more into that right now.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I'm typing my words. Yeah. And so my, my hope for this coming year is to really focus on these internal improvements to help us better support efforts in achieving goals in the other areas.
So did you say the word policy when you were thinking about that as well? Because I'm seeing, I'm thinking like staff training, internal processes, ergonomic desks, I don't know. But, but yeah, also I noticed, because I know, I think one of the things I mentioned that I brought up, you know, when I first became a counselor is there's some really silly things in our code. For example, it's illegal to drive a bike in talent without a license. You know? It's like, I don't think this has been looked at for a while.
Yeah, there's a bunch of that kind of stuff, and it always falls to the, you know, to the bottom of the priorities just because of workload, but yeah, if we can identify them and in a goal, I, I think it, it'll keep them front and center, I'd love that.
Yeah. And it also makes me think of, so that, the kind of policy that falls to the bottom, but also maybe the policies that we've, I know we've prioritized some things like Title 18, Title 17 in our code, and that was really associated with getting better at creating housing. So I kind of, yeah, code cleanup.
Yeah, so I think there's two, for me, there's kind of two in that area. There's kind of just the day-to-day functioning of the city, right? Which is making sure our employee handbook is updated to the latest standards. As Councilor Penomar said, having the right equipment, making sure our training is the right training that's in place, risk management, et cetera. And then there's the flip side of not just the internal focus, but also the external plus internal focus of making our code readable and consistent. Because I know there's been a lot of things between policies that may, or between code sections that may say things differently, et cetera. I'm just doing comprehensive. I want to say consistency and legibility, is that?
Jordan, the other thing too, around that, and you're probably already thinking about this, but it might be worth noting, is to make, you know, make, make the codes that we work on, make sure that they're purpose-oriented as well. I mean, I think that was one of the conversations you had early on, which I thought was really smart thinking. Just so that anybody coming across any of our policies could understand the purpose of the policy as, as part of the, part of the.
Right, when you put the intention in the resolutions, for example.
Yeah.
That was really good.
Great. Yep, Councilor Prestizo.
Yeah, I'm wondering, are you envisioning that staff is gonna manage to do all this? Or are you imagining that you're going to get some consultants to help out?
Um, I think it depends on, I think it depends on what the topic is. For example, handbook, you know, I think is an internal thing for us to make a staff committee to work on along with, oh, sorry, guys, I did not realize that my phone had video on, so you all are staring at my ceiling at the same time. It's a great ceiling, by the way, no improvements needed there. Make you guys see my, my picture me. I think other things like code cleanup is actually often best done by staff as well as with community members because we're the ones dealing with it every single day. And whereas the consultants that really help provide it is when they bring in new ideas and new research, like our Title 18 updates, Title 17 updates, et cetera. That's when it's great to bring in some of that broader expertise.
Yeah, I agree with that. I was thinking it of it more in terms of just, you know, bandwidth to actually do the work.
Yeah. Yeah, so right now, what I want to try to do today's session is the big brainstorm. And then what we'll do at the next goal-setting session is narrow down into our priorities, recognizing capacity limitations. And so that'll be a really great point, Councilor Prestizo, like when we have that conversation of what do we want to get done within a year and how are we going to do it?
Jordan, I noticed that Councilor Bayers has it in the chat, improved internal functioning. So I'm really actually want to check in with her and see if she can expound on that a little bit.
Sure thing. I'm, it's, that's just the name that I was thinking that might capture everything that you were communicating, Jordan.
Love it. Okay, great. So I'll, I'll start working kind of on some of that area. Are there other areas of just getting the basics? Back to basics, where they say that, that you all feel or want to see happen to help support the transition to making these goals happen.
Bayers?
I actually have one more thing I'd like to put on there, and perhaps it could fall under community engagement, and perhaps it could fall under improved internal functioning. But I would, I think it's really important for us to prioritize working on in improved equitable engagement and outreach. And I feel like the developing of that process and how we evaluate our successes and how we go about applying that increased work to everything else that is on this, this great outline would be its own thing. Its own piece of work.
I think Councilor, so what I heard too is, is one, the equitable engagement outreach, which we'll dive into a little bit of specifics that we had last year on community engagement to see if they fall within that category. What rang really true for me was that evaluating success. That is something that our plan currently lacks, is how do we measure progress and know that we've hit what we want to hit?
Yeah, and I think I'm, I'm, I am not articulating this well enough. I, engagement is part of it, like the actual engagement to the community. But for it to really ring true, we need to be applying the same level of growth mindset to our internal processes and functions as well. So, I mean, you know, that's why I feel like it isn't just a subheading under community engagement.
Mayor, go ahead and just jump in.
Yeah, I, I've had two recent conversations, one was with you, Jordan, about the outreach policy and making, you know, aligning a policy with intention. And then I've had a recent conversation with Talent School District Board Member about the same thing, about some of the work that they're doing in outreach and how I think they've faced some of the same kind of experiences we've had over the last couple of years. And so I just feel like, I think when we talked about it, you mentioned that this might be a good place to, or a good time and place to, to assess it and, and for, you know, impact versus intention, blah, 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 and then see where we want to go with it with an outreach policy moving forward. And I have to say, I, you know, Nancy McInnis or, or Don Watson might be a good person to touch base with on this. I, they shared, I, Don was the one who shared it with me, but they're doing some pretty innovative stuff and we're kind of the same lessons learned. I don't want to get into it right now, but I, I, I think some collaboration there would be kind of cool if, if we're going to write, you know, outreach plans and policies.
Perfect. Good, I think that's actually a great segue, I'm going to move us over here. What this section does is just kind of refine what we mean by economic development and affordable housing. So I'm going to zoom in here. And so this is just another gut check, double check, is if what we mean by affordable housing is that we want to increase the housing stock for affordable and workforce households. That was kind of a sub-goal that we have in that goal area. And if anyone feels like that goal has changed, or is that still feel like the main priority for affordable housing?
Um, I'll jump in. Um, I'm, I'm feeling pretty good about that. There's another, there's another phrase I like a lot is, is housing security. So that, that people aren't, you know, afraid that they won't be able to afford in the future. Clearly, the goals that we have now are the more immediate. But housing security is one of those things you think about when you're trying to make a mobile home park, for example, you know, owned by the people who live there, so they feel that there's not going to be a, an expected red increase on the land, for example.
So kind of in some ways protecting current affordable and workforce housing as well as increasing stock.
Yeah, yeah, and I, but I, I think our other, our first two goals of just, you know, creating it seem to be more urgent. I don't want to take away from that, but I do like to have the concept of housing security in there as well. So thanks.
And Jordan, can you expound on make space a little bit, just to make sure that it's broad enough?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm going to pull up the actual goals themselves just to help show the breakdown. So the affordable housing is kind of the broad goal area. The families and houses of all incomes of and thrive, that's the outcome we want to see here in talent. And then we have the specific goal of increasing housing stock. And so these were all the ideas we had about how we can increase housing stock. And one is to make space for more houses. So as you can see, that really lines up with TA4 and TA5, so urban growth boundary changes. We had ideas for increasing density, so getting more houses in the land that we have available. And then to bring in partners to help actually develop the housing here in talent. So that was the definition of make space. So I'll, I'll jump in, I think it is probably easier to understand this with the actual goals.
Yeah, I just want to add, make sure that we add, you know, the, the possibility, or we, yeah, we make room for the possibility of like obtaining space, you know, or purchasing space.
And that's a great one, so maybe land banking is in the wrong spot. Well, yeah, include that in to incorporate.
I don't know, land banking might be in the right spot, just because I know it takes partnerships for land baking, but, but I, I just didn't look down that far to see it, so.
And so just to let you guys know and jump in, what this is showing, so these were all strategies that we have listed to try to achieve our goals. Orange means it's actively being worked on. Green mean it's accomplished or mostly accomplished. And then yellow means we have not actively started working on it.
Are we still in a position where we need to finish the housing needs analysis for any housing UGB amendments?
Yes, I, we could still use our past housing needs analysis to do it. It would, the number I feel though would be much different now that we are post-fire. And we were waiting to see our rebuild come further along so that we could actually show the trends in the housing that's coming back. Part of our concerns with that is that our population estimates have fallen because of the fire, and our number of housing units have fallen. So we want to be able to predict the trends when we go out with that housing needs analysis. So we can assume, we can better know and inform an actual analysis that we won't have to redo, you know, another two years from now.
Yeah, that's a, that's a little, I don't, I can't think of the right word, but it, it sounds like it could really bog it down a little bit, but, but I do, I do appreciate the idea. I appreciate the housing needs analysis process. And, and in particular, you know, the, the concern I have is really accurately identifying the mix that we have so that we target our objectives better. I just don't think, I think to me, the housing needs analysis is going to do less for us, the old one is going to do less for us, not so much on the number side, but on the mix side is going to be a real crapshoot, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
And I would recommend, you know, my, I would like to prioritize the housing needs analysis for this coming year. I do think it is now time to do it so we can move forward with looking at TA4 and TA5.
We have, is that something that I, this is in the weeds, this is my only in-the-weeds question on this, but do we have grant funding for that?
Uh, we do currently have grant funding. We are asking to get that grant funding extended for an even longer period of time. But I would like to move forward that in the near future. Okay. You know, increasing density, our goals, our strategies for that were really to change Title 18 to research what other kind of zoning we could do to support middle housing. And getting, researching some intentional design practices, those are mostly specific towards things like aging in place, fire-wise landscaping, et cetera, to help us with density. I will say for me, some feedback I've heard from that is one of the reasons that density doesn't occur is because of the high cost of creating density. And so, you know, I would be interested in looking at incentive programs or the like to help encourage density to occur. Does that make sense to everyone? Would that be something that you all would be interested in?
Yeah, that makes great sense to me. What doesn't make sense to me is welcome home gifts. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I don't mean to be flip.
That's right, that one actually came out of one of our committee commissions where they really wanted to create something that would help welcome new folks into talent that were coming into the area post-fire. With the idea that it breeds partners will then come and volunteer with the city and, and help increase.
That totally makes sense to me, I just, it doesn't make sense to me in goals.
I'm just going to highlight that one a different color here.
I wanted to ask a follow-up question on a density being more expensive. Is it the situation where somebody wants, you know, if they, if I were to try to build a duplex instead of a single-family home, it would be a lot more expensive for me to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay, but if we're talking about some buildable lands that hasn't been built on yet, you know, dividing it into smaller lots versus larger lots seems to be financially easy. I mean, if I was a developer and I did that, I'd be, I'd be very motivated to, to make it more dense. So it feels like there's context here as far as making density easier.
Yes, and actually, it's, it's pretty cool right now because, you know, the city did adopt cluster housing standards, and we're getting our first cluster homes post-fire. And so this is a good time for us to assess how those standards work and that process work, to see if there are changes we want to make for future development, either encourage more development or change standards of that development based off the experiences we've had so far. I'm going to leave a note because I do have a goldfish brain this week. Yeah, anything else housing-wise that you all have been in the back of your mind or playing with and goal-wise? Okay, beautiful, I'm going to shift us to economic development, we have about 30 minutes here. So economic development, you know, for me is something that we're struggling on. So economic development, you know, for me is something that we're struggling on, uh, post-fire. Um, post-COVID, post-fire, you know, all of the context that is making it very difficult for businesses, um, to get started or to keep going. So our focus is this past year have been to understand what businesses need. Um, the Talent Business Alliance is up and running, which is awesome, and we also have MISO in the area now to support kind of more sole proprietary businesses. We have, as a city, much better direct contact with businesses, Hector's really been focused on doing on-the-ground outreach, um, to better understand what's, what's needed. And we have actively applied for funds on behalf of businesses, still waiting on getting those funds to put them in the hands of businesses, which is why it's in orange. Um, so the next step is really diving deeper into what do we do to help get businesses more robust and bring commercial development to the area? And as Kristen told me to say, this is the six million dollar question, I think that we're all hoping to answer. But any thoughts here on economic development? Yeah, Mayor, dive right in.
Um, I, um, you know, I, I definitely, um, want us to have a near-time discussion about prioritizing, um, we have two committees that I think are important to reassemble, one of them is the Housing Committee and the other one is the Economic Development Committee. I mean, we're lucky to have Alex Campbell in the area, he used to be the Economic Development Director, I think in Bend, um, or up, up in that area somewhere, and, and I have just recently reached out to him and asked him if, um, if we can start, um, if, if he'll meet, meet with us and um, go through our element E, which I think is a really good start, I, I just read element E the other day, and, and so I think we have the foundation for, um, for, uh, some good city-oriented, uh, economic development. Um, and, um, so I just feel like, um, going, it's, it's, it's that foundational stuff you were talking about earlier, going back to the basics and um, looking at what we have in place, which again, was really good. Um, and, and then just really prioritizing how we wanna approach it. Um, and may, maybe even look into hiring a consultant and, um, and building on, building on what we have, um, it seems really, element E still seems really relevant, by the way. Um, I, I try, I read it with the, uh, post-fire lens, and, um, there's still, uh, really great community values there, uh, small-town, uh, economy is built in, um, while also, um, some good work around, um, recruiting and attracting small-town industries, so I think we're, we have some really good foundational stuff.
Great, and I will do another dive into element E as well for this specific section.
Yeah, I, uh, if I can get, um, I, let's see, Alex Campbell told me not too long ago that he would be happy to help, so as soon as I hear back from him, um, I'll, uh, maybe pull us three together or, or end anybody else who's interested in, and, um, see, see what that conversation, um, yields.
Right, and I, and I will share, the Long-Term Recovery Group is working with a consultant right now, um, and they've been interested in presenting to council some economic development fundamentals as well.
So I have a question, whether, does workforce development, um, fall under here as well? Cuz I know there's a nice, uh, kind of overlay with, you know, sustainability as far as, um, grant money to help communities like ours, uh, develop workforce and, and some of, you know, the, the new green economy. Um, those kinds of industries, which, which I think, you know, so many of them are great for a small town.
And so are you, uh, just to make sure I understand my understanding of workforce development, Councilor Bala, it's things like partnering with SOU, RCC, um, other groups to help establish training, uh, locally?
Yeah, I think, I think that's it, and, and, you know, also, it could be apprenticeships, it could kind of really go hand-in-hand with, um, these new small businesses. At least, that's, that's what I imagine. But I'm, I'm open, I'm, I just know that I keep reading that there is, um, there's grant opportunities, uh, for that kind of, kind of development, so it seems like, um, very timely. So just see if that would, that would fit.
Okay, um, we just did the strategic planning with Talent Business Alliance, uh, session, the session we just did was with, um, uh, the businesses in town, actually it was pretty well-attended, um, and uh, something that came, uh, like, that I remember from the conversation was, uh, having a, like, charrette or, or some sort of gathering of, um, property, own, commercial property owners. Right, so there was, uh, there was this idea that, that, you know, the, the business owners are gonna have one set of priorities, but, um, but one of the, uh, one of the attendees was a developer, uh, a commercial property developer, and he said that, 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 uh, bringing a group together would probably be pretty fruitful and finding out what their needs are for rebuild and that sort of thing. I thought that was a great idea, and Talent Business Alliance is willing to, uh, you know, um, to lead that work or work with the city, um, and co-hosting or whatever.
Councilor Bows, go ahead and jump right in.
Do we have, uh, I should say, do we feel like our last market analysis, um, that was presented to us is still relevant and/or do we feel like the, uh, market analysis done by the co-op, when they were um, looking throughout the valley for a, uh, potential next location is relevant for now, and if so, is there a way we can leverage that market analysis?
Yeah, it's a great question, I will say that the only market analysis that I've seen recently in the last few years has been the one, uh, done by the co-op, and it was very specific to grocery stores. Um, at least the, the section that I reviewed. I do think, you know, doing the housing needs analysis, it's really smart at the same time to do an economic needs analysis as well, um, recognizing that commercial and housing do go hand-in-hand, particularly in a small community, so I think that would be a good refresher post-fire as well.
I did happen to have this brought up to me in conversation by, um, a board member from the co-op, and it, it seems to me like there might be some additional information to be taken from that market analysis that would inform beyond grocery stores. So it might, um, be, uh, an efficient use of resources to circle back around to that and see if they have more to share.
Wonderful, thank you.
You know, uh, Jordan, I think we should prioritize an economic needs analysis, and, um, and I think we can take some shortcuts, uh, by way of what, uh, Councilor Byers just suggested, I mean, if they could start with what we have. Which to my knowledge, you know, the last market analysis that the city did, the, uh, the Economic Development Committee did, and it was more of a, um, it was more of a community wishlist than it was an actual market analysis, um, but I do think, uh, that Councilor Byers is on to something, that, that would be a great starting point. Um, and, um, yeah, if we, if we prioritize it in the same way as the housing needs analysis, I think, I think that's probably what uh, what, what would be the best start.
Great, Councilor Byers, is your hand still up?
Not on purpose.
Alright, perfect. Um, jumping over to sustainability, oops, sorry all, to sustainability. You know, this was really focused on mitigating adapting to climate change impacts, both for us and the environment. Um, you can see that there's a lot of things in action right now, nothing completed, I think, um, sustainability may always be an in-action sort of area, but our focus has really been on increasing tree canopy and increasing solar. And we're actively applying for grants to get solar on the ground, we were not able to actually install any solar this year specifically. Um, but a lot of this is focused on trying to get that infrastructure in place. Any comments or new directions, uh, that you feel we should take on sustainability? Yeah, Councilor Bala, dive right in.
Yeah, I think, um, that probably we should add electrification and to reduce carbon footprint, I'm pretty sure that's in our comprehensive plan as well.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilor Byers?
I would bring up, um, gray water.
And I might, if you don't mind, partner with that, um, water conservation has something that my staff has brought up a lot, where we don't provide great support yet to our community um, around switching to more efficient appliances, et cetera, for water.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Mayor, go ahead and jump in.
Yeah, I think, um, I think somewhere in here we should start talking about how to fund the Clean Energy Action Plan, I know that when we did the Parks Master Plan, as part of the planning process, we identified, um, you know, the cost of, of the master plan, and, and then ultimately that led to, um, identifying, um, how to, how to pay for it, I mean, just to put it bluntly, so, I mean, I think doing that work would be, um, would be fruitful.
Mm-hmm. You know, and something I, I'd love to throw out there for you all to consider too would be, um, starting to do formulaic-based calculations on maintenance requirements, uh, along with all of our master plans. So for example, we're trying to increase our tree canopy, historically, talent has never had an arborist to help maintain the tree canopy. Um, so starting to incorporate that into our budget would be fruitful, pun intended for the trees, um, in the long run.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, the, I mean, that's, uh, that's really great thinking, I think we've already learned lessons on that, um, so I think it's actually critical, and I mean, I could, I could name a few, but it's, um, it's in the weeds for this conversation, but, um, I think that's great thinking.
I'll work on the phrasing of that one later. Um, anything else in the sustainability, um, categories that both, um, Mayor, is your hand still up, go ahead and jump in, and then Councilor Greider?
No, I'm, I'm.
Can I interrupt, uh, can you make the, I can't read the bottom, can, thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, Councilor Gray, your hands up?
Yeah, thanks, um, I'd love to just keep a conversation going or in mind, um, I've been kind of tracking, um, with recology too, but about some sort of community composting. Not a huge priority, but, um, I think a good thing to keep looking at.
Perfect. Um, you know, the other thing I've also really learned this past year, sustainability is leaning on our partners who specialize in, in restoration and sustainability. Um, there's a lot of folks with a lot of great work, and I think collaborating with them more to see what support they need to get the job done, rather than the city trying to do its own projects, um, could be a good synergy.
Good efficiency as well.
Efficiency, that's the word, there we go.
Yeah, um, Jordan, can you remind me what the, uh, color coding is here?
Yes, so yellow means no action taken on it. Orange means in, currently in process. Green means accomplished. Um, so like increasing solar power infrastructure, we have applied for grant funds for solar power energy. Um, but it, we haven't actually put the solar panels on the ground, so it's still orange. Uh, and then the white is just the new ideas that we're all generating.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, Councilor Clark?
Yeah, this goes along with, um, uh, fits nicely with, uh, what you were saying about working with partners, but, um, seems like improving the health of, uh, of Bear Creek and Wagner Creek, um, would be, uh, this would be a place to put that.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, great, I'm gonna shift us, we have about fifteen minutes left into transportation. So our transportation goals, we're really focused on walkability and bikeability. And really focus on that greenway, um, pedestrian bike corridors and making current pathways more enjoyable. You know, our major achievements is one, we applied for grant money for Krill Road Connector. And then improving and driving current pathways, you know, we, West Valley View was a really big pedestrian and bike safety project. Um, and so that one is, is improving and establishing those bike corridors. Um, in a manner that, once again, ongoing, which is why nothing is in green specifically. Any transportation comments, Councilor Prestizo?
Yeah, and I've talked to you about this before, and there, I did see some improvement, but, you know, being a cyclist around here, especially after snow days, the amount of gravel and things that winds up pushed out of the vehicle lanes and in the bike lanes makes it just crazy trying to ride a bike. And I realize we have trouble with, um, you know, the personnel and even with some of the equipment to be pretty proactive about, um, keeping them clean, but it does strike me as sort of an unfortunate um, happening that we're putting energy into creating these, uh, bikeable areas, but then the actual infrastructure itself can be pretty challenging to use. So I'm, I, I realize that can be a hard one to work with, but I think we need to be cognizant of it.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate that, Councilor Prestizo, um, and I did ask Brett and Hector to put an article into this upcoming Talent News and Review. Just to let everyone know, our street sweeper is in the shop right now. Um, and we are putting cinder on the streets to help prevent, um, ice during the cold winter event, so you're seeing some accumulation. So right now, our team is hands sweeping out areas that are high-risk or high danger, um, to folks traveling. So for example, we did sweep out West Valley View bike lanes, there's a lot of gravel in there. And so we'll keep doing that until we can get that, uh, street sweeper back online.
Yeah, and I did notice they did sweep that out a while back, and I appreciate that.
Jordan, this might already be taken care of through the, um, CIP, but, um, also, I think it's important for us to assess, um, changing transportation infrastructure uh, as we continue to rebuild. And I mean, uh, maybe if, for no other reasons, just to share with us what, you know, what is the assessment process? Um, you know, what plans do you have, do you all have in place to, to stay, you know, ideally in front of um, street, you know, street improvements and those kinds of things, um, I, when I read the CIP again, for this packet, um, I really appreciate the priorities, I have some, I have some feedback about it, but um, I really appreciate the priorities, but, um, a lot of them are longstanding priorities, and I just wanna make sure that we have stuff in place to identify the emerging priorities, or, um, or rather, I'm sure you do, but to share the emerging, um, priorities, and, um, if that makes sense.
It does make sense, and, and kind of what I'm hearing out of that, Mayor, coming to the alliance with it, is one, you know, we're actively in, moving forward, reassembling Traffic and Safety Commission to help be one of our input teams. And then also, we need to kind of reassess our transportation system plan. Um, this plan was adopted in twenty sixteen, and as we know, a lot of changes have happened since then. Um, and so I think it might be time to re, redo that plan, um, in the current reality. Yeah, Councilor Byers?
Um, yeah, I'm wanting to recognize that, like, we have some, some transportation things that I think are really important, like additional sidewalks on, um, higher, higher foot traffic areas that, where we don't have sidewalks, and I see those in the plan. But also recognizing what would make a lot of sense and improve the immediate use of those spaces, like, that And improve the immediate use of those spaces like that also tie in with our goals. Like improving our urban canopy and just making sure that like the envisioning of those projects includes the whole scope. Down to like when the trees are going in and what that looks like instead of, you know, like working. Working backwards, let's think about it for how we want it to be actually like. When it's finished, you know, for the experience of the residents who use it.
You know, as you say that, council buyers, it reminds me of um conversations um that you shared with me about. Um, about having a rubric for um, you know, in another context, but how that could be applicable here. I'm hearing you say that in between the lines maybe, but.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
Rubrics.
Yeah, I know, and you uh you sell them really well, by the way, so um, but the idea that, you know, when you're. When you're planting it, when you're, when you're creating a um, a tree plan, for example. You know, you go through all the other boxes to see how it all fits together. Uh, that's what I, I'm hearing a little bit of that. Am I, am I on? Am I hearing it right?
Absolutely, but the other way around as well, like if we're planning a, say, a sidewalk installation project. Let's think about it in terms of how we want that whole urban space to actually function. Instead of just having the sidewalk in.
I think I do want to say, and I shouldn't speak out and turn on this one, um, Kristen can correct me later. We do have design standards um that do make sure to incorporate that, to make sure we have shaded sidewalks, um car buffers, et cetera. But I will have to relook at that to see if that's just street design or if that also includes uh pedestrian design as well.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just piping up again. Um, to, that was an example I was using. But I'm seeing a lot of integration between our goals and plans we have in place. And going back to the rubric that the mayor brought up, I, it would be great for us to be thinking about the collective. Our end point of a project across all the goals.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Love that recommendation. Uh, you know, long, longstanding service to this community. I can say I've seen fragmented, um, you know, really good, great work over the years, but it's also fragmented. Um, um, projects, and so this, having something in place that might dial that in a little bit is just, that's a great suggestion.
Alright, perfect. Um, so our last week is our, our community safety. And that's really centered around public safety through the lens of policing, but also just through the lens of emergency preparedness and natural disaster. As well as community engagement. Um, we probably only have time to really brainstorm on one right now and we'll catch the other one uh next session. Is there a preference for which one we dive into right now?
I would vote for community engagement.
Great.
Do we have like, do we have like public spaces in there? Cause uh we got a, we have a grant to plan um, to talk to um. I forget their name, but they're consultants about how to create like a, you know, just kind of like a public space even temporary where people can come. Hang out and talk and that sort of thing.
Yeah, so we have art in the park and music venue.
Yeah, that's great. This, this would be a little, this is a little different. I, I just don't have the words right now, but I'll try to, I'll try to find that. I, I think these are reasonably easily achieved.
Great. Uh, council Prestizo?
Yeah, I was thinking of um, you know, leaning on community partners for this as well, like for instance. Since I have family members that work for the library, I know that they're always looking for ways to partner with communities. For different events and things like that, so it seems like that may fit in here in some ways, even in a, for more. Um, you know, regular and ongoing opportunities for things.
A- and I just want to plug the libraries, because I went to a few of theirs, think and drink events, and those people know how to party, to say.
I love it. Oh, cycle up here too. Any other community engagement areas or thoughts?
I just want to point out that outreach plan and branding is already in last year's um, last year's goal. So I just really feel like that's an overlay, or or what we talked about earlier is an overlay to this, you know, just a policy building.
Yeah, the way, the way it's written to the plan is this is the outreach plan branding specific to the committee and commissions as individual groups. And Mayor, what I heard on yours was more like a citywide outreach. Was that correct interpretation?
No, that's, um, you're right about that. Um, but I do think that this is where it belongs a little bit as well. I mean, um, the uh. Um, and it could be, it could be that you want to keep it in foundational. I don't have any heart, I mean, I don't have, uh, I'm not invested where we do this. But um, I just want to make sure that um, we're not being redundant here, I guess, is really. And now that you mentioned that, I do remember that is what, how we, how we identified it.
Um, the only other thing that I want to emphasize, I know we've had this conversation a lot and we're still working towards it, is really getting into that hybrid environment. Uh, for our community meetings. Along as part of that outreach plan.
Yeah. Do you mind, Jordan, would you um touch on the orange areas in public safety really quick, just to give us an update on that work? You know, it's funny, I read, um, I don't want to take up your time, but I read, um, I, I, I read the goals from. Uh, twenty nineteen and um, uh, they would have been the goals for twenty twenty, but they were adopted in twenty nineteen. And all, so much of this stuff was in those goals. Um, and I just, uh, I, I do feel like. Um, there might be a few things in, um, public safety was a, was a real big priority in twenty nineteen. Um, and there may be some things to look at there that we have missed here, I think. Uh, I think they're named differently. Um, but rather than kind of figure that out now, I would just invite you to look at the goals. And then the other thing I just want to say really quickly is, um, I went to go look at the goals and I was only, there's a list of goals going back. Um, to twenty eleven maybe, and I could only, but I could, there's goals attached only to like. Twenty eighteen and forward, so there's, there's a lot of links, but there's only goals uh for just a few years. So I'm hoping um we can get those back on our website. Anyway, that's an aside, but I do think there's some value in the twenty nineteen goals on public safety.
Yeah. Yeah, he did.
Kristen, you're um.
Kristen has hot mic there. Um. I saw council procedure, your hand was up and I just want to make sure I capture your thought before I do the wrap up here.
Well, I've been trying to figure out how to put this in and it seems like it might be part of the community outreach as well. Um, but it started with the economic development. Um, and you know, some years ago, I was part of a two-day economic development summit for a rural county in California. And uh, one of the things I took away and I've always thought about whenever people bring up economic development is, you know. Creating, you know, understanding and creating the environment that would encourage businesses to come to your area. Is a big part of understanding what those things need to be and um, you know, workforce is a big part of it. You know, companies don't want to go where there's no one who can do the work that they need done. But the, the other part that struck me was, you know, the idea that you have to then take these things and. In a sense, market them or make them available, you know, obvious in your code. Um, because some things that encourage development are, you know, we've already done the legwork to, for these sorts of projects come in. So if you apply and you follow our code, you have a, a higher likelihood of knowing where you're going to end up. With the success of your business or project. And the other thing is um. To sort of make it, make it available to businesses to discover. These days, I guess, a lot through websites and different things so that you are making it clear. That there's certain kinds of businesses that were kind of set up to support. And I think for a small town like talent, it probably, we need to be thinking a little more regionally. Um, because we're not going to have everything that um, all businesses are going to need here in talent, but within the region. And so I think working with our regional partners on this would be potentially really fruitful. But there are some things that would be specific to our town that we, I think is what we're talking about of identifying. And um, trying to uh put into place to encourage the businesses to come in. Including just building the spaces for the businesses to be. So um, it's just something I've been trying to figure out how to put into words. And I'm not sure I'm making complete sense, but there you have it.
No, I, I appreciate that. I think I get it. So you'll test me uh two weeks from now, how I do summarizing.
How good.
Um, and Mayor, I apologize, you had made a request for just an updates on where we are with community safety. So I'm gonna make that really quick and then I'll make sure you all have a break before city council meeting.
Yeah, I'm more, I'm mostly interested in the orange areas.
Yeah. Yeah, so we get it, one of our goals is to mitigate potential natural disasters, particularly post-fire. And so we, we have, you know, on the ground, done natural hazard mitigation assessment. The county has up, is currently updating their natural hazard mitigation plan, and the city of talent has an amendment that we're currently drafting to be a part of that. But we're also a part of a grant that the city of Medford received to do, and council Prestizo can correct me. The D O G A M I, LIDAR DOGAMI, so they're using uh. GIS analysis to identify specific locations within the community that is more vulnerable than others. Also taking into account kind of social factors. Um, so we can name specific neighborhoods that are more at risk for things than others. So that's actively ongoing. Um, we are drafting mitigation studies, I think I mentioned with the county. And to date, we have applied for almost two million dollars in funding to be able to implement the projects that are named in those hazard mitigation plans. And that includes the hazardous fuels cleanup of Bear Creek and Wagner Creek. Um, and then here for increasing our emergency preparedness. So we have established some emergency specific communication plans with our emergency response partners. Specifically, uh, the county and the other various public safety agencies. You know, the next step we're working on is that community communication plan. Um, you know, we have communication plans via citizen alert. Um, but in other areas as well. Um, I know is a continual work in progress.
Thank you, uh, talent staff for um addressing, addressing these priorities. This is, this is important work and I. You guys are doing a great job with it. So um, one thing I noticed on, really quickly, one thing I noticed on um the twenty nineteen. Um, the twenty nineteen goals was to update our um emergency respond plan. I can't remember what it's the E something. Um, and uh, the EOP, that's right. Um, is, can you tell me where on, uh, is there, is, does that, that question overlay anything that you've already got here? Is there EOP in these, in these goals here?
That's great. I think it's worth it to call it out. Um, it's definitely something the city is currently working on. One thing that we shifted for right now is, is Ashland is establishing a much more robust emergency management department. Um, and so we have started partnering with them more and more to start overlapping some of our efforts. Um, just talking about ensure uh, sharing an emergency management coordinator or looking at their cert program. To see if talent can participate in Ashland's already established um, community emergency response team. Uh, so right now, we're working on updating our EOP so that it also matches other EOPs in the areas. Because as we learned with the fire, it was kind of an all hands on deck response. And so the more we are able to coordinate and work together, uh, the easier it'll be.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so thank you all for sharing your thoughts. What I will do now is I will just kind of look through our goals and kind of update certain areas, add certain things. And then prioritize based off what I've heard from all of you tonight, as well as our conversations in the past six months. And present that to you all as council to kind of put your final comments and touches on and, and readjust. Once we have kind of that framework down, I will then go to all the committees and the commissions um to have them select what role they'll play. In helping make those goals happen. Um, so that'll be in April is the goal, and then we'll also have them do budgets. Along with that as playing commissions. And then, you know, my staff and I will also use this to help us uh. Propose a budget for you all to consider in the May, May timeframe. So this will come before you all again, either second meeting in March or the first meeting in April. Um, so keep thinking and keep sending ideas my way in the meantime.
Real quick, uh, Jordan, if anybody reaches out to the school district to talk about what their plans are for outreach. Which I, I was pretty impressed. Um, Don Watson is the one who I talked to about it. She made reference to Nancy McKinnis, but I would recommend starting with Don Watson if somebody decides to do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
That sounds great, and that'd be a, yeah, so I'll connect with uh likely Hector on. With his book near the city.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and I will pull up the agenda.
Alright, so uh, item number three is opportunities for questions. We've uh, we've done that. Um, and so if there's no further questions or comments, uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and take the next uh few minutes. Um, to uh take a break before the council meeting at six forty-five. Are there any further questions, comments? This meeting is, yeah, go ahead.
Just to remind everyone that this will be the exact same link for city council. Um, so attendees, feel free to stay online. I will stay here to keep the meeting open.
Meetings adjourn at six thirty-eight.